Anybody doing okay?
I know.
Well, I'm drummed tonight. invocation with the record to reflect that we're all here. And the invocation tonight will be given to us by Pastor Craig Barnett of Carlton Oaks Baptist Church. And Craig earned his Bachelor of Science degree from the United States Naval Academy. Culminating in his promotion, post military service, Craig pursued theological studies at the Master Seminary in Los Angeles, California, attaining his Master of Divinity degree in 2016. Since 2017, he has faithfully served Carlton Oaks Baptist Church, a bastion of Christian faith nestled at 9225 Carlton Oaks Boulevard in San, in East County. At the heart of their mission lies a commitment to put it to mutual scrutiny of 30. We extend our gratitude and of course, this council. And how about Garrett Aganis? invocation followed by the pledge of
Let's pray. You have placed the stars in the high king above all kings for the 240 and as a state and as a word that your blessing love. We thank you aggrieved by the sudden passing strength in you. Lord, we thank you. We thank you for each one room considers the very willingness to listen to those communicate clearly in all the matters ones most pleasing to you. Security within our city and that our city would be a pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Stephen passed away suddenly. Do you hear from the San Diego ladies tonight?
If all up and at the end, we're going to turn it over to our colleague Jake in. We do want to focus on what Sandag and what we do as a regional with. So we are the regional trains, our highway projects, so have an environmental mitigation program, San Diego County. And we work to provide familiar with things like our youth opportunity paths, such as our smart growth incentive program. So just to level set what a regional plan is. So when we're talking about a regional plan, probably very familiar to what you all think of when you're doing your general plans, the long term blueprint for, for us for the entire region. It's a look at at least 20 years or more, 25 to 2050. We developed this permits that it has amongst many of them and coordinate with our cities and the county and lots of the other that into our planning assumptions. And about the regional plan, it also includes various which outlines how much the which outlines how much the product in order to pay for it. And they certainly can, can provide more information if need or that we're, as I said, we're developing right now our 2025 regional plan. It's currently out for public comment and review. But about two years ago, we had been going out through the community, gathering different feedback from what people wanted to see. And the transportation system we were putting together in a C in the plan. And we went on to the community in a variety of different ways to collect comments, community workshops that we held, inviting people to come in and really participate and share with us what they wanted to see. As well as we work with community based organizations that help us to reach some of those hard to reach populations to understand the needs that they have. And then something that was very unique, and I think we're very proud of for doing with this particular plan development is that we held seven workshops with our board of directors to really get their input in developing the plan and make sure that their feedback and guidance was also helping us as we developed it. And then working alongside our working groups and policy advisor committees. And our working groups often consist of staff who represent each of the 18 cities in the county. So just a quick before I turn it over to Mimi to walk through what's proposed as the project. Some of the themes that we heard in terms of feedback shouldn't be a surprise. I'm sure if you've participated in prior cycles with this, people really want to make sure that we're putting forward projects and policies and programs that help to reduce traffic congestion throughout the region. If we're using transit, they want it to be more convenient, more reliable. They've told us that it really needs to come more often and it needs to be faster. And then school connections was a really important thing. So continuing programs like the free transit for youth 18 and under, really looking at our rural communities and how we can improve their existing services there today. And having it come more frequently as well as providing new service and shuttle services that can carry like eight to 10 passengers and kind of short trips within your community. We heard a lot of feedback that everyone wants to see these kind of programs. And we actually have a pilot grant program that's going to be matter what mode people are taking that they give space for them to do that. So maybe he's going to talk to you about what the projects are.
Thank you. So this is a map of all of our draft proposed projects in the regional plan right now, the draft plan. It's a lot of lines and dots on a map. This is also available online in an interactive web tool. So you can pan around and click on projects. And there's some highlights here of the overall network all combined. There's several hundred projects in there and there is to where he had mentioned in the 2035 timeframe or in the 2036 to 2050 timeframe. So while those projects are planned in those two chunks of time, times, they're not all going to be rushed and built by that date, right? We're phasing them in. Those are just the two big time periods we're looking at. Yeah, thank you. So digging actually the proposed policy and programs that to where he mentioned are listed here. There's 10 of them is available in the draft plan document on our website, which we will share later. And digging into East County projects specifically, starting with transit improvements. We're planning orange and green line trolley improvements and looking at separating the tracks from pedestrian and car traffic, making that safer. We're also looking at seven new T and will terminate at UC San Diego. That project, if we receive all the right funding at the right time, could come online. And we've also heard a lot from the community and security. And highway improvements were also a big topic that we heard. This first project is related to SR 94 and SR 125, which Jay can speak to from Caltrans. And we're also planning for safety upgrades on SR 67, which the Caltrans team has been working on as well. That looking at widening the lanes for evacuation, safety purposes. We all and general operational improvements along the I eight corridor. And lastly, one of the main highway improvement projects we are proposing include.
Hi, council. Thank you, Mimi. My name is Jake Stelton. I am the project manager. I'm here to provide an update on if you answer any questions I can on other. The first project I'll talk about here is the State Route 52 was built over 163 and for years. Caltrans has performed pavement overlays and hopes or aims to actually to drill on a grid pattern through the pavement down through the landfill to the bottom of the landfill and inject what we call compact. This project is to Santo remnants, especially in the PM peak area and implements eight. The project is a year. It's going to be open to traffic by the end. So SR 52 operational improvements, our environmental study phase at Caltrans, we began this month. The opera, the project includes the real on the shoulder of the westbound direction, location to the shoulder of the eastbound direction. Enabling us to establish a new truck climbing lane in place of where that bike path was. And the truck climbing lane would extend from Mass Boulevard westbound on ramp to either getting a bottleneck at Santo Road. 2025 regional plan and has potential to help get construction funding for the project is the potential conversion of the number one general purpose lane to a managed lane that would essentially prioritize transit vehicles, car pools and potentially toll paying vehicles. Two other items in the project are the reconfiguration of the turns into one lane before it merges with the freeway. The study would study the impacts of continuing those two lanes onto the freeway of the San Diego River Bridge. The San Diego Mass, Mass Boulevard, two lanes to three lanes in both directions, million dollars. We would still need to finish our environmental studies and then design before construction. So we anticipate starting construction around 20.
So just really quick to close. Thank you, Jake. As I mentioned earlier, our draft regional plan is out for public comment. So if you'd like to scan the QR code to be able to submit into your comments, you can feel free to do some comments via email or by telephone if someone would like to do that. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
Comments or questions, council? This comment down there was that we expected construction before we finished this year. Just the way it is. So I know you don't have anything to do with that.
Have to follow our activity before we can engage the potential managed lane. Studies looking at socio environmental impacts, socioeconomic impacts. So it is, and I know Santee has been waiting for this project and it has been delayed due to the inability to find construction funding, right? So we're hunting.
Well, my understanding is that with the money that we're getting from federal government. And my question is though, because I thought most of this environmental impact was done already.
So the scope of the project has changed a little bit over time. I believe the environmental efforts that were being, I believe, because of the lawsuits for that development. Progress on the environmental efforts have halted. So we're essentially trying to pick up where they left off to the extent that we can.
And was bike lane going to be able to be moved earlier? I thought it was moved a lot earlier. I guess not, no.
I hadn't heard of, of that opportunity. It will be studied as part of the project.
Well, this is actually good to hear because in the background, we're hearing a lot different information. So that's why the questioning, so. Who else? Great, thanks very much. I said, see you guys Friday, but I won't be there. All right, that takes us to the rest of the calendar and consent. Are there any items to be added, deleted or reordered there?
No.
Wrong. Was that a no? I'm sorry, didn't hear.
None for me.
Okay, thank you.
No motion, mayor.
None for me.
City manager, city attorney?
No.
Any speaker slips?
Yes, sir. I have a speaker on item two and item four.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda with the exception of item number two and number four to be heard of?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to item number two, which is approval of payment of demands as presented. Please call the speaker.
The speaker is truth.
So glad Sandag left, they make me mad. Examples of a lack of transparency, speaking of a lack, sorry, speaking of a lack of transparency, there's my segue. Talking about the city spending. You have two badges cost 382. Badge one cost 154. Badge two costs 204. Badges for what? Why? Why do you need badges? Of course, I can make it an assumption, but it wouldn't be accurate. We have CFE D conference $20. CFE D conference number two, $6.39. Charges for what? Why is there discrepancy in the price? SD fair tickets $15 for who and why? And why couldn't that person be satisfied with all of the free carnival rides the residents of the city of Santee paid for? There's plenty. I don't think you need to go to the fair, whoever that was. And you should be transparent. Your name should be in there. Memorial Day $250. What was that? I don't know. Summer seasonal light pole $4,086. Why did you need one? Mailing of damaged frame for $16. Now that I know what it was and I'm glad it was remedied. And the transportation and mileage reimbursement costs $239. And that is very ironic with the Sandag regional plan where which they, one of the many omissions was vehicle miles traveled reduction agenda was not mentioned. That's why they're talking about bike lanes, et cetera, things that don't make any sense here. But the point is mileage reimbursement that that doesn't apply to those in government, right? It just applies to everybody who's not in government. Thank you. That concludes my comments on that item.
Thank you. Any other comments, council?
Not on that item. Most to approve.
Second.
Motion carries unanimously.
And that takes us to item number four, which is approval of a city cellphone and personal cellphone stipend policy to provide guidance on the use of city issued cell phones and provision of cell phone stipends for city employees.
The speaker is truth.
And so I stayed here. I want to say first, reading the item, I want to say thanks for bringing to my attention that El Cajon is out of control with their unregulated cellphone use. And I'm going to be happy to bring that to their attention at some point because that's not the only policy that is lacking there. And for Santee, who is using their personal cellphone for city business? That is just dumb. It's dumb. Thank you.
Saves you money though.
Yes, but getting to the point of why that's dumb, and I'm glad the mayor is the dumbest one in the room. Technically, not my opinion, just technically on the facts. Do they not realize their personal phone will be subject to public records disclosures? Because if you want me to prove it, I can, I can easily, actually, maybe I already have your number. It might, that might be the case because I did do a public records request. And apparently for a cost of $20,000 extra. So if it saved money, I guess I would like to know how much money there was saved because we got 35 employees waiting to find out when they get their, what's a $120 stipend to use your personal phone. So it's not free. It may be saving money, but it's not free. And I mean, I still think it's dumb. If you're working a job that's private, a public, sorry, public, you should have a publicly provided phone. Yeah, it costs more money, but when you look at the risk, I would never do that. I just think you got to separate your private life from your public life. I just think it makes sense. Thank you.
You know what? Truth, I want to let you know that even though you might have a city phone and a personal phone, your personal phone is still open to the public records act. So it doesn't really make a difference in that area.
Most approve item four.
But thanks for your comments. I have a motion, was there a second?
It was me, second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Then that takes us to non-agenda public comment.
We do have three speakers, mayor.
Hi. First, I'd like to thank Nick and Heather for giving me the plans for the Shadow Hill Park renovation, literally before the end of the meeting. Really appreciate that. Nice to thank Eric King for meeting me at the park and walking the trail with me to review and note my concerns about the trail. Mainly though, I'd like to request that you reconsider adding the bells to the renovation. Between kids playing and music from the basketball court and music and whatever party may be going on, I think most people agree we don't need to install added noise makers. I know you said that the noise wasn't very bad, but think about a kid just sitting there ringing that bell constantly while you're having it, trying to have a picnic. You're trying to have a conversation and this bell just keeps on going off. I don't have the volume up, but it's got to be annoying. So I was just asked to, you save some money, drop the bells. What's that?
Thanks, Carl.
The next speaker is Brenda Hammond.
Hello. I want to share a story about the sheriff's department with you. And hold on, it's a good one. I mean, it's a nice one. I guess it was around in 2008 or so, I wanted to go on a ride along with the sheriff's department. And Sheriff Gore said, you have to be enrolled in a law enforcement course. And I said, so, so I enrolled with at Merrick College, you know, over in Kearney Mesa. And they talked to me into doing healthcare instead because they said, you know, yeah, you should be in healthcare. So, and they suggested that I be in healthcare and while I'm taking care of seniors, I could still work with law enforcement sometimes. Okay, so I graduated and I worked in healthcare until I couldn't anymore because I kept re injuring of injury I already had. Which by the way, last week, I re injured it again, fighting off a bully in another city. I'm not going to, I'm not going to rehash it. You can watch El Cajon city council meeting and hear what I have to say. Okay, and then while living with my boyfriend, which I married and we rented and bought all over East County. There was good, bad, good and bad things in every city. I wanted to say that I realized this today when I spent some time in Santee, that Santee has like a magic, some kind of magical thing about Santee. It might've been because that's where we bought our first house and our first born was born. But anyway, so thanks for the concerts, but Thursday we're having, tomorrow we're having Manny Sopeta, so I have to stay in Lemon Grove. And just so that you know, I don't hate the sheriff's department, I love their toys. Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
The next speaker is truth.
You know, in order to find the magic that happens in the city hall, you guys need a sign in the median. This is really hard for weird people like Sandak to find this place. And they only came here by, I know it was because of me. I had to choose between this meeting with a Sandang presentation or another Sandang learning session with a free taco dinner in City Heights. And that was a very tough choice because I like City Heights and I dislike the paid political groups that surely showed up unchecked without me being there. But I'm glad Sandai got to come see East County for a hot second on a 91 degree day where the useless $1 million mile bike lanes are, are. And you know, they talk about the orange and the green line. What orange and green line? There's a cop per shuttle that doesn't even exist here. All everybody needs to know about the Sandang regional plan is a state still wants people to stop driving via any method necessary, including the road user mileage act, which the state is still planning. While they have agencies like Sandig implement managed toll lanes on every highway. They didn't very much highlight that one, did they? They don't really care about air quality for congestion, it's about behavior modification, social engineering. And just like the presentation said, it's about requirements, what is dictated to us rather than what we want or need. And so speaking of driving, I saw in the news that Santee now has no traffic's AI system for certain intersections. And the only way there could be no traffic is if there's no drivers. A quicker green light does not stop people disobeying traffic laws like law enforcement would. So my questions with these four AI cameras that cost $30,000 each so much for saving money because that doesn't include maintenance and operation. Who gets the priority to go first pedestrians, buses or drivers? And what if the money was spent on one or two deputies instead, so there could actually be traffic enforcement? I also don't like that the Israeli company No Traffic made a lot of fast American cash when they've already received over 133 million since 2021 from investors like Vector Partners, whose board has members with an anti-car agenda. And they have worked for the data harvesting CIA front company Palantir. No Traffic CEO Tal Kreisler said, quote, "No Traffic's platform is designed to fully support V2X vehicle to everything communication, enabling integration with connected and autonomous vehicles. The platform's advanced AI sensors can detect and analyze the behavior of every road user regardless of their connectivity status," end quote. So basically this company is engaged in creating the infrastructure for stupid smart cities. It's not hard to figure out. The technology to have more efficient stoplights does not require foreign companies funded by nefarious organizations. And changing the subject, I'm disappointed that the city's YouTube video of the June 11th special meeting and the regular meeting is missing 50% or 100% of the audio. And for the budget, wasting tax dollars on carnival rides made me wonder if anyone here has ever considered cost benefit. The goal should be to increase business and potential tourism dollars, not entertain children or provide a photo op for somebody's campaign. That being said, the discussion on the budget was probably the best I've ever heard. It was a lot of necessary questioning and transparency. And lastly, question for Ron. Why do you have trouble seconding a motion? He used to be pretty good at getting in a first. I don't know what happened. This guy won't even open the door for people anymore. It's keeping people out.
No further speakers, mayor.
Only you would notice that. All right then, let's just continue to move on here. And we'll go on to item number nine, which is a public hearing. It's continued public hearing for tentative map TM 2023 003 and development review permit DR 2023 dash 007 acre parcel located at 10939 Summit Avenue. In the R seven medium density residential zone and finding the project is subject to California via Environmental Quality Act. Sections 15164 addendum to the EIR and 15183 projects consistent with a community plan or zoning. You're up.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Christina Rios with the planning division. The item for you tonight is a multi-family project located at 10939 Summit Avenue. The project site is 4.65 acres and is developed with a single family residence. The proposed project consists of a 42 unit residential condominium development that includes 21 duplex three story buildings with attached garages for each unit. Unit sizes range from 1,745 square feet to 2,085 square feet. On-site improvements include guest parking, recreational areas, common open space and landscaping. 11 guest parking spaces are required and 21 guest parking spaces are proposed. Access will be provided by a new driveway along Summit Avenue. In addition, improvements along Summit Avenue and at the end to the north of the property. This is a view from Summit Avenue looking east. The proposed maximum building height is 34 feet, nine inches, which is below the maximum height of 35 feet. The buildings feature earth toned stucco finishes, wood, lap siding, tile roofs, decorative window shutters and wood balcony railings. A building separation distance of 10 feet is proposed between all buildings as required by the Santee municipal code. To provide a transition in scale and form from the adjacent single family development to the south. The project provides wall plane offsets, variation in roof lines, variation in building setbacks and use of different colors and materials as required by the Santee municipal code. This slide summarizes key points of the project and addresses concerns that the city has received from residents. The parcel was part of the housing element rezone program EIR. The previously certified EIR adequately discusses the potential impacts of the project and there are no substantial changes that would require major revisions to the EIR. Therefore, an addendum to the EIR and exemption were prepared pursuant to sections 15164 and 15183. A vehicle miles travel trip generation report was prepared based on the city of Santee BMT guidelines. The guidelines indicate that the project, that projects consistent with the general plan and projects that are anticipated to generate less than 1,000 daily trips are not required to complete a BMT assessment. The project is anticipated to generate 336 daily trips, which is eight trips per dwelling unit. Impacts were determined to be less than significant. The project will comply with the California fire code and the project's fire protection plan. Some of the required project design features include fuel modification zones, site preparation and building construction. The project is subject to the noise regulations in the Santee municipal code. The project is subject to the noise regulations in the Santee Municipal Code, including construction hours. A noise disturbance coordinator is also required. The requirement for a noise vibration analysis will be determined prior to construction. Padre Dam confirmed sewer and water availability. Gas will not be required as all new residential units are required to use electrical appliances. The project is required to widen Summit Avenue to match the frontage of adjacent properties. The project is also required to install concrete curb and gutter, streetlights, and drainage facilities. The road improvements are similar to what was required of the Calvary Chapel located to the west of the project site and the Abel subdivision located to the south of the project site. Summit Avenue is a private road. However, there is an easement for road and utility purposes. A 10-foot setback is required to the south, adjacent to the single-family development, and a 16-foot setback is proposed. The city rezoned the project site, as noted, from low-density residential to medium-density residential as part of the Housing Element Rezone Program. And that was to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation of 1,219 units. The project site was one of 10 sites on Summit Avenue that were rezoned to achieve adequate housing capacity. Public notification on the Housing Element Rezone Program began in 2019. Property owners of the affected parcels were notified by certified mail. Notices were also published in the East County Californian. The R7 designation allows 7 to 14 dwelling units per gross acre, and the proposed project consists of 42 units, which is nine dwelling units per acre. Staff recommends that council reopen, conduct, and close a public hearing, find TM 2023-3 and DR 2023-7 exempt from CEQA and approve the TM and DR per the attached resolutions. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer questions and the applicant is also available to answer questions.
Thank you, Christina. We do have two speaker slips. James?
The first speaker is Truth.
Hmm, I didn't say a word and I lost five seconds. Interesting. That's okay, I don't need it. Going from one single-family home to 42 boxes, three stories high, with only 21 guest parking lots and preferential parking for fire-prone electric vehicles because the rich are obviously preferred here. Or maybe the developers prefer to have lithium fires as close to their developments as possible. I'm trying to figure out the nonsense. Are there going to be elevators for accessible access to the upper stories? Or maybe they're not preferred, I don't know. The owner of Wilmington is Concord Associates LP, formerly located in San Francisco. But when its status was terminated in 2013, then it began again in 2014 in Costa Mesa. Maybe there was a reason they left San Francisco. This item says the site is to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation arena. The city rezoned or upzoned the project site. And only in crazy California is a whole generation being deprived of real housing, the America dream, a positive progress, something to be proud of, meeting people's real needs, to instead upzone to ugly stack of packs with no backyards, dumped it to single-family neighborhoods. And that's why you see, you know, they have to build the little parklets, what do they call them, the totlots? Because if you're lucky enough to have a child, well, you're not going to have a backyard to take a minute. You got to go with everybody else, a community yard. It's very communist, actually. It's a sham, a shaman, a scam to benefit big corporate developers at the expense of neighborhoods. And yes, I absolutely am ranting for here because I'm very frustrated that this is what continues to be pushed in every single city. It's almost like cities are going along just to rake in more tax dollars while pretending they're making housing affordable. Because everybody can see it's a lie. I knew source just revealed a small, little piece of a bigger story about how some housing projects are actually benefiting politicians via political unions funneling money to them that they've made off of housing projects such, not this one in particular, but like this one. Well, in most states, anyone could buy a mansion for the cost of an ugly box unit here. And some here can't seem to figure out why there's been a years-long mass exodus from the state of California. It is a disgrace that some people cannot admit that projects like these are not helping the market. They are actually hurting the market by raising prices around them, thereby pushing people out. It's called gentrification. Because how much are each of these box units going to sell for? A million? Two million? What's the point? When are people going to wake up at some point? When everybody's gone? When you don't have anybody that can afford the housing anymore? Because they're not going to choose to live on the streets. I'm not. I'm going to choose to move. That's what's going to be my choice. And there are solutions, you know, VMT, CEQA, fees on single-family homes, they all need to go. Arsonist, they need to stay in prison. All the expensive electric needs to go. And I got a lot more ideas than that because we need to start fixing the spiraling status of the state rather than enabling it to continue to where there's going to be nothing left, nobody left here. You're not going to have any tax dollars to play with in the near future. Hence why every city's budget is lower because you have less people. Thank you on that happy note.
The next speaker is Melanie Osborne.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Melanie Osborne and my family owns the property that includes Summit Avenue, identified as APN 3782301400. I'm here tonight to respectfully request a pause on the proposed map approval due to concerns regarding easement rights and future road maintenance responsibilities. Summit Avenue is a private blacktop road that runs entirely within our property, which is approximately 80 feet wide and 2,500 feet long. It currently provides access to about 20 homes and the Calvary Chapel Church. There is an easement across our land for road and public utility purposes, but we have identified several issues in the development plan that warrants attention. Number one, property encroachment. Wilmington's proposed map shows them using 10 feet of our land across a west property line despite their own legal description excluding that area. Please refer to Exhibit A, Parcel 1, last paragraph of their deed. Additionally, we will need time to research if this will expose us to any slip-and-fall liability to this section of the property. Two, easement limitations. This easement allows us for road access in utilities. It does not grant rights for additional improvements along the road or at the Summit Avenue and Princess Joanne Road intersection. This is outlined in Exhibit A, Parcel 2. Three, vacated public use. On October 3, 1900, the San Diego County Board of Supervisors officially vacated Summit Avenue for public use. This is also noted in Exhibit A, Parcel 2, last paragraph. We are seriously concerned about the increased traffic this future development will bring and the impact on road maintenance. There is currently no agreement in place to ensure the road is maintained or repaired, especially given the damage that may occur from heavy construction equipment. At a minimum, we believe the road maintenance agreement should be required for any development beyond two to four units for any future commercial use such as a school. This agreement could be recorded in the legal description or added to our deed. We are open to working collaboratively with city staff and Wilmington to find a reasonable and fair solution. However, no improvement should be allowed on our property without a written permission. Lastly, for reference, in 2009, Padre Water requested and was granted a separate easement that clarified their right to do work beyond the general road and utility easement currently held by others. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
No further speakers, Mayor.
Carrie, do we have, can we respond to that in some way? Because there's some good questions about why have we been working with that family? So who has that information?
This is actually more of a private property issue because it's privately owned property and it's a road easement. And we determined that that grants access to the Wilmington property.
I'm kind of confused though because are we ever going to take a revocation of irrevocable dedication or anything?
Oh, this is a private street. So, and we haven't made any specific determinations because that's not our job about determining the relative rights between individual property owners. We've been provided with a copy of an easement that says that they have a road and public utility easement. I think the speaker acknowledged that. There may be questions that they need to work out. And one issue option for the council is if you're not comfortable with the information you have today, you could include a condition related to some kind of maintenance agreement. You could continue the item or you could go forward. I mean, this is not something that, this is, with private streets, this is, I think, something you've heard multiple times. It's a regular occurrence, so it's not unique to this property. But, you know, there is, we believe that the access that has been provided is, demonstrates that they have some access rights that are consistent with what we've done before with regard to tentative maps. But that, again, that may be disputed at some point in time by the various parties involved, private parties involved. So I, you know, I guess there's no absolute cleanup approach to this.
What I would rather see, though, is the parties to talk, especially if they're waiting to get an improvement. So, I mean, that's the way I see it. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Let's see, there's a lawsuit waiting to happen. We should put it off.
Everything's a lawsuit waiting to happen. But the issue that, one of the issues that I did here is that there's a 10-foot section that seems to be in contention with regards to the easement. So that's one thing. But when we do, often when we do allow for development on private roads and there is a road easement, there's usually, oh my God, I just lost the word, a road maintenance agreement. It's established. It seems that in this instance, there isn't one. When you're doing a project this large, obviously, you're going to have more cars than four units or 10 units, you know, single-family detached homes that we've done in the past. So I would definitely like to see some sort of a road maintenance agreement agreed to. So, because you're, obviously, you are going to have a lot more vehicles going up and down that road. Someone's going to have to replace that. And it would be, it wouldn't be fair to have the construction, and they're right, the construction vehicles and all that type of stuff going up and down that private road. And the rest of the people, they're the ones that are responsible for fixing it when there's no, because there's no agreement in place before any of that construction starts. So, yeah, I'd feel much better knowing that there was a road maintenance agreement agreed upon by the parties and that they've resolved the issue of overstepping their, overstepping the easement, that 10-foot easement. So, yeah, I definitely would rather see this pushed off until that's done.
I do have a.
Although I am in favor of the development as a whole, I just want to make sure that we're on the same, we're giving the residents their fair due when it comes to the utility of the road.
Good. I actually had a similar comment. So the project is good, but there are some issues there. Road maintenance agreement was one of them I hadn't noted here. Carl, I had a question about, you know, improvements on the street. Is it private street? Is there frontage improvements, you know, as part of the project? Because they had the Calvary Church and the project just, I guess, south of that, the six homes recently completed? Yeah, the conditions we're asking for on this are almost identical to the condition. During those two projects? That would be between them. We're not aware or party to any of that. Okay. The road.
Yeah. And the destruction of the road, the number of people going up and down that road. This is a much larger project than six units.
Counsel one?
Yeah, can you pull up the map of all the parcels around that area? I think you had a map of that.
While you're doing that, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm probably going to have a question for you.
So I agree with what's been set up here, the maintenance agreement. Because of this rezoning to an R7 makes sense. I like the project in general. But what I want to see come back to the council in between the next project that might become, come to us, is an overview. Well, we have that here. So what my notes were, an overview of current zoning and entitlements for each property, assessment of the infrastructure needs, so roadways, utilities, access points across the area, potential land use scenarios that align with our long-term city goals, opportunities for cohesive planning. That's the problem when it's not a master-planned community and it's a bunch of parcels. It's, you know, one comes in, then another comes in. And I'd like to see what the staff's vision is for the whole area. And then also identification of development constraints. Are there any environmental issues, easements, which we've just talked about, or access limitations across this whole summit area? Those are my comments.
Did you have anything else, Ron?
Well, I think it's obvious. What, councilman, councilwoman? Yeah, I know, sorry. Whatever your name is. I just want to see it's planned for the future. Also, I think that would be important because if we have other developments coming in, that road becomes a lot more important. So I think we need to look at that, too. And as Vice Mayor said, the road maintenance agreement, first one we got through, but this one, everyone following this can be a real problem. So, and this, again, like I said, this is a lawsuit waiting to happen, so let's avoid it.
Okay, thanks. Come on up. And please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Joe Offaly with Wilmington Residential.
Thanks. So here's the thing. Every delay in construction costs money. We're not really the kind of council that wants to delay if we don't have to. But what, you've heard our concerns and we want to make sure that the people that have been in this neighborhood for a very long time, their needs are met. And I'm sure that there's probably been some discussions. I just don't think our council believes you've come to the end of those discussions. Would you be willing to go back to the table and have those discussions and work out some more details?
Yeah, I think if I could, we have an easement over the property that allows us to do what we're doing. If there's a discrepancy in that 10-foot area, we would stay out of that area. We weren't aware. We looked at it pretty closely with our attorneys and our surveyors to make sure everything we were proposing was consistent, is allowed within our easement on this property. We are continuing to do additional improvements along Summit Avenue, including right now, if you come off of Princess Joanne onto Summit, it's like a driveway approach. We're fixing all that. And we're doing other improvements to make this whole area nicer and improving it to its full width. So if in the future, the city decides that they want this street as a public street, it'll be to your standards.
So there'd be curb gutters and sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's an issue with a private party that has an easement on another private party, I don't see there's any issues from the city's perspective. That would just be something that we would have to handle separately. We want to work in good faith with the property owner. We're willing to accept a condition approval to continue to work in good faith to come up with a maintenance agreement. We're happy to engage in a maintenance agreement to do that. We understand we're impacting it, just like the other 10 properties that you've identified as housing opportunity sites in your housing element, you know, to implement. We're one of those. So we're happy to be a part of that and kind of initiate that process so that that can happen. We don't want to hold up our map and our approvals, but we feel like we're willing to accept it as a condition to work in good faith.
I'm totally fine with that as a condition.
Can we do that, Sean, at this point?
Yeah, you can add a condition. I would, I would actually, I don't know about the good. I would say that you would, to the acceptance of the city engineer, there would be a sufficient maintenance agreement before. And Carl, when would that be before? Before initial grading?
Yeah, we would probably do it before issuing the grading permit.
Fine.
Okay.
The easement and the improvements. So there may be just kind of a misreading of the maps or whatever, but I do think we can include a condition that it has to stay within the easement area.
Of course, yeah, or a modified easement if we could, but an agreement between the two.
Right, exactly, right. So those two, those two could be added conditions.
Okay, all right, Eric, thank you. Melanie, can you come back up, please? If we approve this with that condition that we talked about, working with you on all these issues that you brought up, does that satisfy your needs for tonight?
I would have to ask, you know, my family about stuff. I can't really make decisions for them, so I can get back to you on that one.
Okay, well, that's not going to help us if we're not, though. Okay, here's what we're going to do then.
Mayor, can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
I'd like you to consider, and the applicant will have to come up and agree to this, but, you know, the premise of this is that they have the rights to build the improvements. What we want to avoid is some kind of situation that could arise in theory, that they say, "Well, oh, I guess we can." in theory, that they say, well, oh, I guess we can't do it. So, city either forgive us this condition, or you have to use, consider using your eminent domain powers, which we don't want to be in that situation. There's an ability to waive that issue. If the developer would agree to that, that would certainly make this an easier decision, I think, for council.
Okay. All right. Go ahead and come back up. Thank you, Melanie.
Maybe you could explain that again. We're, we're saying that we would- Agreed to what?
You would waive any ability to claim that you cannot build the off-site improvements within your easement and within the rights you have, and therefore request that you be relieved of that condition, or that the city use its eminent domain powers.
So, what would our, what would our path forward if, if we come to no resolution with that property owner?
Wouldn't go forward with your-
No project.
Right.
I don't think we can agree to that. I mean, we have, we have rights to build this project on this property.
You, you wouldn't be waiving those rights. But if those rights are insufficient, you wouldn't be asking the city to use its power of eminent domain to address something you think you have?
I'm okay with eminent domain part, but I think that there would have to be some sort of modified condition that you would allow us to move forward with the project.
Well, that's counsel.
I think what he's, what he's saying is, if it comes to the point where there, there is another 10-foot or 15-foot section that you're not actually, you don't have access to, and you need that, and you can't find an agreement on that, then we've got an-
You can develop your, your parcel, but you won't be able to do the improvements that are required. That's the issue.
Saying if I don't do the improvements, then I don't have a project.
No, it's the way the Vice Mayor stated it is my intended meaning. And so, if you're agreement with that, we can craft a condition around that.
I think we're, I think we agree. Yeah. I mean, we don't want a forced project and use the easement that we're allowed to utilize that is within those rights, that we can move forward. That includes anything that's in the ability for us to do within our-
We, we don't want to be in that position.
I understand. Yes, we don't want you either.
Fair enough. All right. I think we're on the same page.
Okay. So, this is, tonight, we're going to have those conditions that we've discussed, which requires you to work with the adjacent property owner and have all care is, you know, used for while working there and whatnot. And not that we believe you just go in there and be better when you leave than it was when you got there. Curbs, gutter sidewalks usually do that. And then what we'll do is we'll monitor to see what's, how it's-
Condition one is that prior to issuance of grading permit, the applicant has to present to the city engineer a road maintenance agreement. The, the access and the improvements need to be either within the existing easement as presented, or some modification of that request for the city to use eminent domain authority to acquire rights in addition to the rights that they either have or they-
Have a motion for that, or any other-
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. And, and Melanie, let your family know, we are working to help you out, make sure everything works out just fine, because you're all going to be neighbors. So-
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, that takes us to item number 10, which is a public hearing on a resolution establishing a special assessment on certain parcels of land that were subject to involuntary weed abatement and/or other administration fees by the city and for which costs have not been paid by the owners of record to have said parcels and determining the- Karen.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor. Tonight, I am presenting item number 10, the Weed Abatement Special Assessments. Fire Prevention Services staff are here with me tonight and are available for any questions. Also known as FPS, inspects and identifies properties that contain vegetation hazards, respond to citizen complaints, and notify property owners to abate hazards. The goal is to reduce fire risk in our community. Typically, in June, courtesy notices are mailed to property owners as the hottest and driest times of the year approach. Property owners are notified by FPS by mail with a notice to abate public nuisance, which is a courtesy notice. The notice explains what needs to be addressed for the property to be compliant. Property owners are provided 30 days to address any issues, and the property, the property owner is mailed a final notice to abate public nuisance, and a notice is also posted on the property. This provides 10 additional days to address the issues to any forced abate work to be performed. This fiscal year, 136 courtesy notices were mailed out by FPS. Of these, 97 properties were owner-abated. 13 properties required further FPS enforcement action that led to administrative costs being incurred and/or contractor abatement being performed. There are four properties that remain unpaid. This slide lists the four properties subject to the assessment. Additional information for range from $743 to $2,707, depending on the level of administrative activity, and vegetation clearing, $7. And the next slide will show you the location of the four properties that remain unpaid. 8516 Placid View Drive, 10331 Buena Vista Avenue, and 87 Fort Vitually by the city through United States Mail on May 16th, 2025. And additionally, there was a notice of public hearing to establish the assessments published in the East Recommendations. Conduct and close the public hearing, approve the cost report and account of unpaid weed abatement invoices, and adopt the reference in the report. And this concludes my staff presentation. We're available, myself and FPS staff are here if you have any questions for us.
We'll, we'll hold your motion in-
Carries truth. Only one speaker, Mayor.
I thought you heard the motion part. We don't need that. That's not important. Especially when there's plenty of homes who've also, 31 Buena Vista Avenue is my favorite hideaway. And I just think it's kind of funny that people-
We'd go down there, but you'd get lost, probably. All right. Any questions or comments?
I'm going to second the most, but it's, it's a lot of hard work and-
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Let's see, 10, through 2026, Santee Lake.
Motion to approve.
All right, then. Good job. Please prepare to vote. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 12, public hearing for the fiscal year-
Do you need a report on this?
I gotta call it first.
That's what I'm waiting for.
He at least let me-
I knew that.
One thing, not letting him do a report, but I have to call the maintenance district. And you did. See you back here at 8 o'clock in the morning, truth.
Now you know where the $400 light went to.
Keep it in our serious light.
Oh, was that my comment? A city can create a district and tax it to get more money. Proposition 218 apparently does not define the term streets, but cities and their attorneys decided it includes all public improvements within the street right-of-way, like the median, the parkway landscape, and travisino, safety lighting, and street. Because the claim is that the parcels of the residential subzone receive a special benefit from the maintenance of the Western Bike Path and the improvements for residential units 1 and 2. Alma and Beth, and speaking of tax scams, this item clarifies that, quote, distinguishing among taxes, fees, and assessments can be difficult and often depend- key feature that distinguishes an assessment from a tax, fee, or charge is the existence of a special benefit to real property. Without identifying a special benefit, there we could easily define City Hall as a special benefit zone and tax everyone that works here for the pleasure and benefit of using this public space. Make up whatever rules you want, and you can-
Next time? Okay. These, the fees get voted on?
There are times, like the one you just asked.
Just, just so you know, though, that these are subject to 218. And so, people do, if there's any increase, they have to do, do have to vote on it. So, just want people to-
Yeah.
On assessment.
All right, then. That, oh, we have to vote on that. That's right. Okay, please vote. For the fiscal year 2526, Santee Roadway Lighting District, annual levy of assessments.
Most to approve.
Second.
Carl, see you back here at 8 o'clock. I understand you get up every day at noon.
Nah, 8 o'clock. Same page as truth there, but I didn't really understand most of what she said. So, regarding this resolution, the city is, and I quote, estimated at the F2526. So, my first question is, if they're development-related, why are they not being paid by the developer or the, as are the two assessment things that we just talked about? You're about to vote on assessing this annual, this council meeting. I'm going to ask again, where are these 20 additional streetlights going to be located? B is based on an estimate of need and therefore may never be installed. So, I'm hope, I'm going to, that's it.
Here's my question, Carl. I don't know if this is your bailiwick or not. But generally, when we do an assessment, we collect money. And the reason why it's spread out over everybody? Because everybody's supposed to, at some point in time, have the potential for benefiting?
Yeah, the, the whole entire city has benefits, whether it's on Mission Gorge Road, Quea Maca Street, anywhere. The entire city benefits from those lights, and that's why we create those assessment districts.
And do we have times when we've funded these, but we never put them in?
These are usually funded by developers. For example, the project just approved, they'll be installing those two lights. That'll be two towards the 20. We only pay for the lights that are actually installed, and then the money just goes into the pool, and it's used for future improvements and other light adds and improvements in the future.
Renewal and things like that?
Yeah. And, you know, light improvements-
You need to pay for something that somebody else is going to put in, and you're just going to bank that money for some possible use in the future?
Well, it's banked for light replacements. Right now, we just, for example, just completed a whole LED light replacement program. That extra money that's collected, that's not used for, primarily, most of the money is used for electricity, but it's also used for maintenance and for bulb replacement and repairs.
And in the 40-some-odd years that Santee's been a city, we've never thought about making money for lights?
Well, we don't make money. The money's-
It's not banking, not make.
Well, it, any money that's not spent, it is banked, and then it's used for replacement costs. And that's what the estimates are based on, for replacement and repair costs.
So, then why are we now, all of a sudden, wanting to levy?
This is done every year.
This is not the first time.
Every year.
Okay.
Been done 45 years.
That's why you-
Did not know that.
You hear us go through it so fast. All these we've gone, we do every year.
Yeah. It's, all the, all of these are done every single year for that, for that specific reason. It's budgeted. It's how we budget for the improvements and maintenance.
Okay. And so, the 20 is just a?
It's, it's an estimate based on future development, like the one that was just approved a few minutes ago. We, we have to plan for it for the future so that we have money to pay for it without borrowing money or using general fund.
Okay.
Installation will be done by development fees. The maintenance of it will be done by the city and the assessment.
Okay. So, why wouldn't you assess those two lights to that development?
Well, you-
For maintenance.
If it's interior development, but they're not, they're always at the, at an intersection. But no, it's, it's something that every citizen of Santee may utilize that road because it's a public road.
Not Summit.
That's not, it's not, they're not going to be on Summit.
Okay. All right. I think, I think you've addressed what I was asking.
Great. Thanks, Carl. All right, let's vote. All right. That takes us to item number 14, and that's a resolution approving the annual levy as a successor agency to County Service Area CSA 69, a special tax within the Santee Lakeside Emergency Medical Services Authority boundary for fiscal year 2526 and collection on property tax roll.
Now I can say good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight's public hearing is required to collect the annual levy of the Santee Lakeside Emergency Medical Services Authority, SLMSA, ambulance transport special tax on the property roll, on the property tax roll. The City of Santee and Lakeside Fire Protection District are successor agencies to the former County Service Area 69. In their capacities as successors to CSA 69, Santee and Lakeside Fire Protection District are authorized to assess, levy, and/or collect within their respective boundaries taxes and assessments levied and collected by the former CSA 69. The total combined levy for the special tax on parcels within the CSA 69 reorganization boundary is estimated at 3.5 million, of which 1.5 million will be levied by the City of Santee, and 2 million will be levied by Lakeside Fire Protection District. This amount includes an annual CPI adjustment of 3.12%. The 3.5 million will be included in the SLMSA budget to be split evenly between the two agencies. Staff's recommendation are to conduct and close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the annual levy of the special tax and collection on the property tax roll. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? There are no speaker slips?
Most to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. Good job. Again.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to item number 15, under new business, which is initial presentation of staff recommendation for proposed organizational restructuring. Gary.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. These items were discussed through the budget hearings. And so, if you approve these tonight, we will come forward to you in your second meeting in August with the budget amendments for those. And just one note, and that is that the confidential secretary to the city manager and city council, we've already changed the reporting relationship as of July 1st.
All right, thank you. Speaker slips?
One speaker, Mayor. Truth.
Thank you.
You know, I was helping for like a Doge, so you guys could cut, and you had more money to play with. I'm trying to help. I actually think fleet positioning building department services to in-house, anything that could be in-house is a help. I guess your phones, too. This item says, as part of council's adopted budget, the administrative secretary position in the city clerk's office was eliminated. And then I just heard the reporting has been changed. And I'm really confused. But it says, staff identified a continued need for support to both the city council and clerk functions. So, did staff just reverse the council's decision on the budget, or was that mutual? Because it just gave me a weird vibe reading that and then kind of hearing that, too. Because it reminds me of the extra conference vacations that didn't seem like they got council preapproval before they just jacked up the bill. Speaking of saving tax dollars, I think this is going to be a theme. And I'm just going to address one other thing, and that is, it says, there's a recommendation for an August 20th meeting. Is that true, that there's going to be an extra meeting that day? There's another special meeting? Because I hope not, because I'm not going to be there. I am sure I have way better plans that day. Probably going to be at the beach with some ice cream and cake. Thank you.
Questions? Comments? Counsel? Let's do it, then. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. I mean, anyways.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That's going to take us down to non-agenda public comment.
We have one speaker, Mayor, David Baker.
David, thanks for your patience.
It's a backer.
Backer, sorry.
Hello. I just thought it'd be really cool to-
Make sure you talk in the microphone.
Yes, my name is David.
You can lift it up a little bit.
Awesome.
There you go.
I think it would be cool to have bike parking at City Hall. I noticed the lack of it since I've been working in the office, and I think it could promote a more active transportation for, like, city staff, councilmen- promote a more active transportation for, like, city staff, council members maybe, and people who attend city council meetings to commute here via alternative ways than cars, because I just have my bike hooked up to a fence outside. So for your guys' consideration, thank you.
Thanks. I thought we had a bike wreck out there somewhere.
Karen thinks it's by building five, yeah, between four and five.
Oh, might be a good, might be I'll be able to lock my bike up.
Move it down here.
And clearly, I don't ride a bike looking at me. I need to, but I don't.
Clearly.
Clearly.
Thanks, David. Great. All right then, that takes us to city council reports. Ron?
We all went to the 4th of July.
Laura?
So my, I did attend, council member Hall was not able to attend MTS, and I'm his alternate. And by the way, he always attends, so this is probably my second time in four years that I've attended a meeting. Wow. They were discussing budget, which everyone is around this time of year, and they openly were talking about fiscal cliff, a few years away.
Yeah, they're saying four, but it's about two and a half.
Yeah, just dismal. And then, you know, there's a lot of elected officials from around the county in the room that maybe some of them don't understand budgeting and finance and running a service industry-type business where you need ridership to actually increase revenue, or paid ridership.
Did the ridership increase from 3% to 4%?
The last time I went, however many years ago, they said, and this was after COVID, so it was 2021, they said, well, ridership's improved, but not paid, you know, the magic's in, yeah, the magic's in the detail.
There's more people riding, they're just free.
Yeah, for free. So the one point, and I did ask before the meeting to just get caught up on the agenda anyway, they did mention, or, you know, the, is she a CEO, or what's her title? CEO. She did say that monthly revenue has increased by over 400,000.
Did you ask her whose idea that was?
We should ever and pat him on the.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Good job. I mean, why wouldn't you just keep that going? That's, that's just one easy fix. But I guess a couple of years ago, when there was the strike, I didn't realize this, but a lot of the employees are contracted, so MTS, MTS employees, employees, but they also contract out a lot of their services to, and then those employees, they did a strike, and so then the board said, well, let's talk about bringing this in-house, and I guess this was the third, the third of five meetings to talk about operationally costs, all that kind of stuff. I mean, it would, they're on a fiscal cliff, and bringing it, this in-house would be catastrophic. I don't even know how anybody could sit there and watch that presentation and go, oh, no, like, let's stop right now. But they're like, oh, bring back two more workshops. It just was ridiculous to me. Like, it is never going to happen. It would, I don't know, it was just shocking to me. I don't know how you stand it. I don't know how you stand it. But anyway.
Why do you think he's so gray?
Yeah, I got a few. I don't know, just, it was very fascinating, and I, a lot of pontiff one priority, and clearly the room.
So I put it best, it's just stop.
Yes.
Period, just stop.
My goodness.
And they don't listen.
So if I, I don't remember the exact number, but that youth opportunity pass that they talked about cost them about a half million dollars or so a year? Yeah, so that's free rides.
For a while, I think they were doing it till age 26.
Yes.
Well, and Sandag just gave a presentation about, you know, increasing public transportation offerings in East County or out here, but if you go to the MTS that actually runs it, they have, their fiscal cliff, they have no ability to do that, and they're common government agencies that clearly, I know they talk, but they don't, they don't have a good plan. I mean, build it so they will come. It's not happening.
They've been adding service for the last five years.
It's crazy. If it was a regular business, it would be bankrupt, and it almost is.
Well, I think I was responsible for the demise of the last CEO because I said we should get rid of that MTS and just put it all under Sandag since they get all their money from Sandag, it seems like, so, but that didn't go over real well, because they could save just in salary alone probably millions of dollars. Oh, well, that's a heck of a one to, you know, report to follow up on. So anything, Dustin?
Don't report, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor. And actually, I don't have anything either this time around. So how about Gary?
Only that earlier in the meeting, you mentioned Summit Avenue and looking at comprehensively, so we'll take that as informal direction to do that work.
All right, city attorney?
No report.
Okay. Well, by the way, you did kind of mention the 4th of July, Independence Day, Santee Sluice. That was a tremendous success. I heard a lot of good things about it. I think all the council members were there. Were you there, Ron? I don't remember.
He's in the photos.
Yeah, check the photos.
Just messing with them. So it was real good, so appreciate everybody that came out for that and stuff. Anybody out there was there? I know Sam was there. Carl, you should come out some year, we have a great time.
I can see the fireworks from my driveway.
It's not the same thing.
All right.
Truth, were you there? You should come out sometime.
Carl, you missed a half an hour of traffic.
Exactly.
All right then, that's all I have. Okay then, you know what? We have no closed session tonight, so you know what? That means we're going to adjourn.